Yeah, sometimes it is.
All set, thank you.
We're all set.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the April 2nd, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda, we already earlier had the flag raising for Donate Life. It was changed from the common to up here because of the sunshine. 6:30 we have a discussion with Representative from Charter Communications concerning services and rates. We have public service announcements, town administrators update, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Do you have any public service announcements, Priscilla?
I do. One is to remind everyone that it's Election Day next Monday, April 9th. And the other one is, Selectman Dowling isn't here today, but to wish all Orthodox Christians in this, in the Sturbridge community, a happy Easter this coming Sunday, and to Selectman Dowling as well.
Craig, any public service announcements?
No ma'am.
Mike?
I have an after-the-fact public service announcement. Today at the Senior Center, there was a really nice dedication to, of plaque and a, some work that has been done in the reception area for, for Paul.
Loranger.
Loranger. And his wife, Maja, was there and spoke very eloquently, and there was, it was very well attended, the room was full, and it was a really nice event. And I just wanted to thank all the staff at the Senior Center for helping organize that, and also thank Maja Loranger for the generous donation to the town. It was a real nice event.
Okay, and to follow up on Priscilla's note about Election Day, Monday, election will be held at Old Sturbridge Village from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening. There is a public service announcement concerning the Open Space and Recreation Public Forum. All Sturbridge residents are invited to attend. It will be held Wednesday, April 11th, 6:30 to 8:30 PM, Page Hall at the Public House. If you are interested in going, please RSVP to jboobon@town.sturbridge.ma.us if you plan to attend. Also at the forum, the winners of the photo contest will be chosen there. Okay, so that is it. Okay, Anna, could you please come down and introduce yourself?
Anna Lucy, Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications.
Okay, now you have been invited here because over the past several months, not including time before that, we've had several complaints about outages and not satisfactory response to customers who call with complaints. There was a particular period where certain areas in town were out for three days, if not more. And apparently when people called, they said, you know, they had to make an appointment for someone to come out and check things, and overall, people did not have a very good experience. Apparently, one of the causes was some nodes or something. Now, a lot of the equipment in town is old, isn't it?
I can't remark on that. I can give you an exact, I can go back to the operations team and ask, but I'm afraid I don't have knowledge on the age of the equipment.
Well, do you have knowledge on, is there a plan that they constantly update?
So, yes, if any of the equipment malfunctions or is not performing to the tests of this cable system, it is fixed or replaced.
Okay, but they, there's not an ongoing thing, they wait until something happens?
Yes, if it's a, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, or unless there is a system-wide upgrade that is planned, and that would not just include Sturbridge, but many towns around it. Right now, there is no such plan.
It should be, because the system is.
We pay for it.
Yeah, but the system is old. I mean, there's no doubt about it. And I think some people don't realize we do have a cable committee, so people should be addressing them more, along with the Board of Selectmen, but we do get several complaints. Is there any way to notify people when the system is going to be out for a while?
So, Liam passed me the email that you received on leakages, was the main issue, and frankly, this was my first leakage issue, so I had to do a little bit of education on it myself. Leakage issues are unexpected, but we are required by the FCC to constantly monitor for them. We have trucks that actually go around monitoring for leakage to make sure the cable system is closed, again, a requirement of the FCC. Once we find and identify that a leakage issue, an alarm sounds, I guess, and a leakage is detected, we, depending on the size of the leakage, we have to act within a certain time period. If the leakage is determined to be a large one, where the interference into the cable system could cause interference in other subscribers' signals and receive it, we have to act within 24 hours. If it's a smaller leakage, we have more time, up to seven days. In the case of Lauren Lane, there was a significant leakage at number 11. And our, according to our response team, the house was what we call tagged, it's a specific notification that we receive from the FCC to notify the customer that there is a problem. Usually, the leakage is coming from a wiring issue on the customer's property that is sending interference signals back into the cable system. So, number 11 was tagged. We did have to disconnect right away because of the interference into the system that was impacting others. They were tagged on February 25th, and they called back on the next day, and they were turned on the same day with a tech coming in to fix the problem. Same thing with numbers 5, 6, 9, and 19, a, when we do, when the techs did their original signal leakage alarm, that they kind of think of number 11 as the epicenter, and then other, these other numbers were seen as potential leakage areas. They were tagged as well, but they were never disconnected. They were, they called a tech, the tech came the next day, and fixed the leakage issues.
Okay, because some of the complaints we got were that it wasn't the next day that a tech person would come, it was two, three days.
There's more issues than that, than just that, too.
You know, and I'm sure the rest of the board has questions. Priscilla?
I do. There was a storm early, in the earlier part of March, and it really wasn't a blockbuster storm. And I know Selectman Dowling was in the same area, I'm assuming Selectman Blanchard as well, we were out for 41-plus hours. The distressing piece to Charter is that, when, when you call, let me just, let me give you an example. When you call National Grid with an outage, and they record the outage, when you call back, they will s- tell you that, "We know that power's out in this particular town, part of your town, estimated restorage time is 11:00 PM," whatever it is. When we call Charter, they don't have a clue, and these, the people who answer the phone are the most polite, and they're very nice, this is not an indictment on the, on the people there, but it's, it is on your system. They don't have a clue when there's going to be a rest- restoring power. They say to us, you know, "Check it out online, hello, cable's out, how are we going to do this exactly?" And then I get a statement saying, "Everybody is restored in your town, you should have power, and you should be all online." This is a day and a half before. Really, this is your map? Where they don't even know that, that this is going on? It's unacceptable on, on a non-event in the weather, because that was a non-event. Which, if we talked of a serious snowstorm with 30 inches, no problem. If you talk about a, the tornado, God forbid, we got it back faster than we did with, with a non-event. Okay, so, I think that your system needs to say to the person calling you, no matter what town they're from, "Your service will be restored by 7:00 AM." The, the person has no, when you hang up, you know as little as you did when you made the phone call. And that's very frustrating for a customer. And, and I'm speaking to you as a customer as well, and, and all our other customers are the same thing, they all get the same response, and it's not the technician's fault, it's what's fed to them. And, you know, if people don't know to call you to get a rebate for the days they lose, no one tells them. You don't automatically rebate their bill and say, gee, we know Sturbridge lost power, I mean, lost cable service for two days, we're going to automatically rebate you, you don't. And yet, we hear from residents, too, your service, your service fees go up and up and up, yet the service is not improving. Just repeating to you what people tell us, plus some of my own frustration.
Does, do you get the same response on restoration? I'm assuming, it's hard to tell with the, when you're calling, if the power is also out, or is this after?
There was no power out.
Okay.
There was no power out. The power never went out, cable went out.
It's just cable?
Just cable.
Okay.
And it went out like around 6:30 on a Friday night, and came back on Sunday midday. Again, with a non-event, really, a non-event.
If you don't want it on the record, I can get it later, but I would be interested to hear the area that it was out, or just.
Sure, I'll tell you after.
Even a street, yeah.
Yeah, I'll tell you after.
Just to flag it for the team.
Absolutely, absolutely. Of course, I was just going to ask, do you think it's possible, in your service, in your communication process, that you could implement something like National Grid has, to be able to give people that are in this situation, because I know when you call for service, they'll tell you, they're very good about that, I'm going to give you that kudo right there. If they tell you they're coming between 10 and 11, they keep to that, okay? Or they'll call you and tell you they'll be late. But isn't, is there no way that you can contact your whole system to just, it all's all computerized, to be able to say, you know what, we know you're out, you'll be restored by, like I said, 7:00 AM, or 10:00 AM, or whatever the case may be? Is there not a way that you could do that?
I don't have an answer for you, but I, I do know it's controlled by a regional operations center, which continues to upgrade and take customer feedback on these kinds of things. That, I think that's a really fair question.
It is, considering the person I call could be in Kentucky. What's that going to do me? I mean, yes, that's all great, that you have a regional upgrade and all this kind of stuff, that's wonderful, but if my call goes to Kentucky, that poor person in Kentucky has no clue what's going on in Sturbridge.
Yeah.
But the regional would.
Yeah, because it's difficult. A lot of times, the only way people know there's a general outage is on Facebook. We have a Sturbridge community, and somebody will put my cables down, I'm on such and such a road, what about you? And then.
Yeah.
People feed in, and you find out you're not the only one, it's a big area and stuff.
And I, I know our local operations team, when I speak with them on like, major, more major incidents on storms, they do try to provide estimates to the town on major outages, like recently in Connecticut, we had one, not one of ours, a contractor doing street work drilled into our fiber. So, we had a major fiber cut, and that takes time to repair, so they were providing updates on, okay, I think it's going to be another six hours. So, that, I know the ground team gets a pretty good idea of what it's going to take, but it, that can be, how that's communicated, I can do some digging.
There isn't any communication, because one of the times when I made a phone call to say, any news, the next day, any news on restoration, the, the comment I got from the tech, from the person answering the phone, was, "We don't have any teams in your area." That's not exactly comforting the next day. So, the, the people who are checking the computers and are looking at the map of outages did not even know that you folks, or maybe you actually weren't here, maybe she was right, maybe you weren't here. And God knows she should have been, because I know that I was on the first call, like, like the, like the chair said, it's on Facebook, and I know mine wasn't the first comment. So, you know, somewhere, somewhere A and B are not talking to each other.
Okay. Craig?
We've got all these teams, we've got all these regions, and we've got all these plans, but why do we keep having the same problems? It doesn't seem like any of that facility stuff is working for us. I can, I can bring up a point to you, just to give you an example, and Selectman Jim will back me up on this. We went to the HDTV boxes a few years ago.
Yes.
And you opened up a small store here in Sturbridge to provide the additional contact with the general public to get their old boxes back and get the new ones out. So, I went in there, and I told them, I said, you know, "I've lived in this house for 15 years, but the cable is still under the old owner's name, and I'd like to get it changed." And they said, oh, you got to bring in this, you got to bring in that. Brought in everything they wanted, gave them all the paperwork they wanted, gave them everything. Today, I still have the same name of the old owner, and I've been paying that bill for 15 years.
He's right, I can, I can validate that 100%. He's right.
I've got a cable system that I've got two TVs, one in my bedroom and one in my living room. The one in the living room never, ever misses a beat, 24 hours, 7 days, it's there. The one in my bedroom, 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, probably two or three mornings a week, shuts right off. And then it comes back on, but it's got this whole little, like it's rebooting some kind of a thing in there, and little dots go flashing across, and when the thing comes on at 3 o'clock in the morning, the volume goes to the top. It's a nice system.
You should be sleeping.
I know. It happens all the time. So, I'm wondering, are they, you know, are they, are they doing upgrades, or why does this thing happen all the time with one TV set, but on the same line as the one in the living room, and nothing ever happens to that?
And is the, are you watching the one in the living room also at that time in the morning? I'm just curious if that you.
I can only watch the one in the bedroom, but I can.
Hold on, yeah.
I know the one in the living room is on.
If there is upgrades being done to our, inside the plant, they do try to do them at a period of time where few people are watching, just for limited service interruption. We do have to constantly do video upgrades, or essentially the programming that feeds your box, and it's all be, wiring and all that, and I don't want to say wiring, because it's not very technical. All the programming that's done, essentially coding behind the scenes. So, that could account, I know they do.
But both TVs are on the same wire, and they're both getting the same signals.
It's trying to determine if it was, if it occurred on, in the morning on the living room TV as well as.
The living room TV can be on all night long, and never miss a beat, never does. But the bedroom TV, 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, probably two or three nights a week, bing, shuts off immediately, and then comes right back on, and goes through all those lights blinking and everything else for five minutes, and then all of a sudden, it comes on full blast.
Again, it's, it's pure speculation, there, maybe there's a box issue with the one in the, the bedroom. It could be checked out.
I'm not a cable guy.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a team somewhere looking at it, but they're, fortunately, they're not at my house.
Somebody else. I don't mean to interrupt, but let the record show that we're being taped by the Telegram and Gazette. Okay, anything else, Craig?
One good thing is, I had a call from a, a resident who lives on the common here, and he wanted to comment on how good the service was with Charter. He said he has had zero problems, he had a, a problem during the storm, the last storm called up, they were there immediately, fixed it. He says, "I don't have a problem with the world with Charter, they're doing a great job." And this guy's been in town for 65 years, he's been here a long time. So, there are some people that are really satisfied with the system, but there are some people that are just not quite up to snuff. I mean, you know, when you look at the Charter telephones, it kind of scares me with the seniors because of the fact that if you have a Charter telephone, theoretically, if the power goes out.
It's out.
That system will only last about eight hours, as long as the battery backups hold up on the pole. When the battery backups go, so does the Charter telephone system. And there's really no backup to that. So, if you've got a senior that wants to dial 911, and he's been out for 10 hours, he's got a problem. It does not work. And that is something that, you know, I've been looking at, this is 2018, and they should have an answer for this particular problem, because if you put in a Verizon telephone, we have had tornadoes tear the poles down on the ground, and we never lost a telephone, ever, that I can remember, unless they ripped the wires off the poles.
So, the Verizon telephone lines are run on a different system than the, our phones, which are essentially run on our cable wires, a voice-over internet protocol. Verizon are still copper wire, hardline, probably for inclement weather communication purposes, the most, still the most reliable, although also the most outdated in a odd juxtaposition, because you can't, there's no electricity issue with just pure copper wire, essentially your same technology as your paper cup and string. But we do, ours is run over our cable system, so when we do have interruptions in power, it does affect the phone service. But I can certainly check on whether or not there are any improvements, especially for people who are.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is that, you know, 50 years ago, we didn't have people living as long as they are today. So, now, the elderly population is starting to, you know, overtake the area, and more people are. Hi, Mary. Just thought I'd throw that out.
I have my street directory, I could list everyone's age.
After, after you're done, can I follow up on what Craig was?
But you understand what I'm trying to say, is that.
Yes.
These people, they're hanging on a Charter phone, and if they have a problem, they know that they can go to pick up their telephone, and they're going to get somebody. But in essence, they're really not if it's an extended outage. And that just kind of scares me a little bit, because we've got, you know, the, the population is growing older, and more and more and more, so we're having more and more, we can tell you in ambulance calls that we're having, you know, issues. People are, you know, the medication, the way it is today, there's people living longer.
Okay, Priscilla?
To follow up on Selectman Moran, just said, he had this same argument, if I, if I may, Craig, when Suzanne was here. Now, Leon's been here three years, almost?
Almost.
Almost. So, we're talking three and a half-plus years ago, when we were negotiating this contract. He had the very same concern and argument. Bottom line is, in three and a half years, nothing's improved.
Okay, on, for.
On, for what he's saying.
On contract purposes, our phone service is separate from the contract.
I'm talking about the contract you have with the town. His concern, but we were told, if, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, but weren't we told that they were going to look into this?
Absolutely.
And they were going to, they were going to improve everything for us and whatever. And here we are, three and a half years later, and Selectman Moran has the same concern that he voiced three and a half years ago. And we were told, when we were preparing this contract, that they were going to take all our concerns into account, and that they, we had the attorney here, and everything was going to be all hunky-dory. And here we are, three and a half years later, and we're still telling you, telling Charter, not you necessarily, but selling Charter, the same problem exists.
And even though it's not on the contract, isn't your telephone operations governed by the Department of Telecommunications and Energy?
No, actually.
Why aren't you regulated?
Over to the internet.
Because it's an extenuated service, unlike what Verizon does with their hardline. It's a sort of a, it sounds odd to say, but a service that, an additional service that we offer, in addition to the cable, which is where we're regulated. For example, our internet is also not regulated by the Department of Telecom and Communication.
Do you think maybe there should be a disclosure to the general public?
Mm-hmm.
On exactly what your position is regarding internet telephone service, and the pros and cons of what might happen?
I can't comment on that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Well, could you just maybe pass on the question to somebody?
Yes, happy to.
Mike?
Well, I've got, now that Craig brought it up, I've got, you know, two things. The first one I'll address is what, what Craig was saying. I, I had the same experience, and I'm sorry, it, it's not, you know, part of the TV stuff, but it is voice, voice modems. And my mother has Lifeline, so I recently got her a, a voice modem from Spectrum, from cable company, and I, you know, I looked into the, the modem battery backup, and the only thing you have available is like a two-hour Cisco backup. Your voice modems that you're issuing currently is an Iris 1602, model 1602 Iris, which is a very good voice modem, it's fantastic. But I don't know why you can't offer the 1602G, which is exactly the same modem, except it has an eight-hour battery backup. I mean, you know, that, it, it can't be that much more expensive than the, than the Cisco one that's, you know, for somebody with Lifeline or something like that, two hours isn't, isn't very good of battery backup on the voice modem. And, you know, I, I know that isn't what you came here for tonight, but you're getting an earful, and that's what we're here for. The other, the thing that I wanted to bring up that's, that is related to, to performance under the contract is, I'd like to know how you're doing with, you know, I know National Grid's taken over the, the ownership of the poles and everything, and we have a lot of double poles, and how is that program going? Are you, are you working with National Grid to get the double poles out and getting, you know, getting the lines over onto the new poles and stuff like that? We've got a whole list of.
So, I apologize, I don't have a specific update on double poles that is handled by sort of our, our double poles expert, which I know Leon's been working with all the companies to get that together. I can say that they, between the power companies, so in this case, National Grid, and Verizon, the other pole owner, have started a, a new system, which sounds like it's helping in the efficiency of getting the double poles resolved, that it's a notification system where once one top person goes, owner goes, they then notify down the line of how to move the cable, or sorry, wires off the pole. So, it's not just sort of a month goes by, and you're wondering what goes on, there is a notification system, which is better.
The only reason, the only reason I brought it up is you, as our government representative, should know that it's an area of concern that, that we as Selectmen have. We want that to go smoothly and efficiently and quickly as possible, because, you know, the, the whole double pole issue is way behind the, the timeline curve that it should be, and we'd like it to be brought up to, you know, to, to a more reasonable amount of double poles out there.
If there is a specific area of town that you're trying to move along faster, or something like that, please let me know what.
No, I, what I'm saying is, I want you to work with National Grid, and get your stuff over as quickly as possible, as soon as they give you the clearance to, to go.
Yep.
That's what we're.
I will, I will let you know that I've been talking to the three utility companies, and we are trying to coordinate that.
I just wanted to bring it up as an area of concern for the town, that's all.
One thing is that if we could have Leon keep an eye on when the next contract comes up, if we could bring this telephone system in, and see if there's something we can do to negotiate on behalf of the residents.
I'll be in the home by then. What's it, seven years more?
I think that's your probable.
I'm just going along with his insult.
That's right. Insult, it was a truth.
I'm sure that Anna will also say that that's not something that is covered under our contract, so.
Well, I, I don't think that we should leave the residents, who have probably, you know.
Most vulnerable.
Got a lot more Charter phones in this town than there are Horizons, hanging on a hook. I mean, what is it going to take, somebody to not get an ambulance when they need it, and a couple of people die because of this phone thing? I mean, their system, when they're running it, if they have to, they'll put a little generator beside the phone pole, to keep that battery charged, to do whatever they have to do with their system. But it may not take care of a house, but they keep their stuff up. So, they, they know what to do, they're just not doing it, in the event of an emergency.
Well, we can certainly put it down, even though it's not part of the contract, it can be raised again. And I'm sure you'll convey the thoughts on that, along with the other thoughts. But I personally am amazed that there's no plan, well, you don't know for sure, to constantly upgrade, you know, to keep an eye on the equipment, instead of being reactive when something happens, you know? I mean, we've had cable in town.
Long time.
Long time, well over.
I, I will confirm again, if maybe there is some upgrades around nodes or hubs or something like that, but just as far as you have a hybrid fiber coax system, it's capable of increased, especially since we went all digital in this town a couple of years ago, delivering multitude of HD channels as well as internet speeds. And we just did a speed lift this year to bring standard residential speed up to 100 megabits per second. So, the, the backbone of the system is up to date and strong. There might be some minor equipment things that I, again, minor, that I am just not briefed on every. on every day, that I can certainly ask about, but to my knowledge, no, at least major upgrades planned.
And now, follow up on Priscilla's, the neighborhoods that were out for one, two, three days, is there any way that the company can just automatically credit them without them having to call and say, hey, I was out?
I don't, I don't have a problem giving her the names now, really, it's not anything to any one person. One is Farquaad Road area, Blueberry Lane, Fisk Hill. Those are the ones that I know of for the three days. And it went, and it went down Farquaad to part of River Road as well. I don't know how much of River Road...
River Road?
Right, because they all feed off each other.
All right, Fisk Hill, River Road...
Farquaad. F A R Q U H A R. Blueberry Lane. And it has to be some of 131 that's connected to that, too, around that area.
I was out for two days.
So you, okay, so 131, and that's a business, right?
Did have a major problem there.
It was not a small area.
No, it wasn't a small area, right?
Okay.
So that whole, that, if you look at a map, that's going to take in a lot of area, because there's going to be some side streets off of that, too, that I know are affected. Because from, you're not going to go from this point of town and then affect that one, it's going to be everybody in between. So between, I would say, from where Craig is, at one point of 131, all the way down to Fisk Hill, and then some.
That's probably about a half a mile.
And again, the power was on, it was just...
The power was on, no, no one lost power. It was just cable popped right out at 6:30 at night on Friday night.
And, sorry, it was, you said it was early...
Yeah, March 2nd or something like that, March 1st or 2nd?
March 1st or Friday.
March 2nd, there you go, March 2nd, yes.
Texts about it.
Yep. And, I mean, we had a storm, but it wasn't, we had like about four, five inches, it wasn't, and it wasn't those days either, it wasn't like snowing for four days. It was a very minor storm, when you look at what we've had for storms.
I, I'd just like to point out that not everything is bad. I, you know, in my neighborhood, last fall, we had a, a tree knock down a whole set of power lines and cable television, telephone, everybody was out. It, it actually cracked the telephone pole and knocked it over. Within three hours, we had power back and cable television, and within, by the next morning, we had telephone back. So our utility companies, and I think that's pretty darn good service, if you ask me. So I just want to point out, it's not all bad, sometimes you do a real good job.
Now, on the issues that have been raised in the questions, do you suppose you could get responses and give feedback to our town administrator on the concerns?
Can I, can I just follow up?
Priscilla?
If you can, if you can give feedback to the question of about why you can't, how are you going to work out that you can notify people? Because some of us use the Internet for work, and if we can't access the Internet for work, that's a whole other issue. Okay? I mean, you've got to drive around town, find a, find a spot and just use your phone, but that, you know, you don't need to do that, I mean, because it is work, I mean, for myself, I'm speaking for myself, and I know there are others, because some of the folks who I've talked to work from home. So my point being that, can you figure out and maybe let him know if it's even possible that you can do like National Grid does? Because the grid does do it.
You mean like a notification system?
Notification, so that when we call in, and the person in Kentucky answers the, the charter phone, that they can look on their computer, and they can see, oh yes, Sturbridge, Mass, your service will be restored such and such a time. Versus, gee, I'm sorry, we don't even show any outages in your area. And it's not their fault, please understand, these folks who answer the phone are the most polite, and they try their hardest to help you, and they feel, they're very apologetic when they can't help you, because they know they haven't answered your question. So they're very professional, very proper. It's not them, it's the company itself.
It's just frustrating for the people.
Of course.
And we hear the frustration, because some of us feel it, too.
So do their poor people who answer the phone.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
No, I think you folks did a nice job.
Well, it's not a public hearing, but I'll...
You know, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I'll, I'll allow it, though.
My name is Almanard.
Yeah, no, but I'll allow it, but you need to come down to a microphone, because this is broadcast at home.
Absolutely. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay, people don't know.
So my name is Almanard, I'm the resident from Nine Lauren Lane.
Can you speak into the mic, please, for the folks at home? Thanks.
Almanard, I'm the resident from Nine Lauren Lane. A couple points of clarification, I guess the question, you had mentioned, I apologize, I didn't catch your name, but you'd mentioned Nine Lauren Lane, it being up in 24 hours, that's not correct. We were not back up until Tuesday, we went down on Sunday, whatever the date was, because I can pull it back up in my email. We noticed all the trucks in the neighborhood, there was 14 homes in that neighborhood, from what I understand, contractually obligated. You're supposed to notify the residents that you're taking the cable down, that did not occur, one issue. The second issue is, we were told, apparently we had to call, I didn't know this, until till Monday afternoon, so Sunday out, Monday out. We were told we had to call and make an appointment, I saw one of your trucks, so they said someone's coming to the neighborhood. I asked for them to recover our house, because they explained the node issue. It didn't make any sense to me that it would take the whole street down. So I started investigating that further, because they wouldn't come and fix our house until Tuesday, I think is when, we ended up later in the morning on Tuesday. It ended up getting fixed, but what was frustrating to me is that it doesn't make sense that, why would I have to call and tell you that I'm out if you took down my service? Which according to your contract, if you take down five or more homes of node, based on a node issue, you have 24 hours to recover that, which is not what occurred, which is a breach issue with the contract. Your, your quality of service, to all of what was said here tonight, I do think you owe the town, the residents, the number of outages and the number of homes, because you have to track that, it's also in your contract. That's a public document. That contract states that your quality of service is tracked on, on the number of outages you have. So you should be able to come here and present to the selectmen, that here is what the number of outages are that have occurred, here are the number of homes that have been impacted. And I apologize, I think, Priscilla, I think you had raised this question about, of crediting back residents.
Yes.
I, I think based on the number of outages and the frustration level with people, that I, I think that is due as a response back to the town collectively, is why are we seeing so many outages? And I'll tell you, like, what frustrated me the most is the way that it was handled. Again, I, the customer service person was fantastic talking, but hadn't a clue what, what was happening. So I, I'm a person, I investigate, I understand the technology, so I looked into it further, it just didn't make any sense to me. My cable is back up and running, it works great, I had to update, upgrade the modem, because the speed actually got faster because of the issues, which is prompting me then to say, which is in my email, and I don't know if that's the one that was forwarded to you, is the degradation of quality of, of the lines and the service in the town. It shouldn't get to a point that you're sitting in front of the selectmen to ask line by line to be addressed. You, it gets monitored. You're a big enough company, and you're getting paid enough revenue to be able to, to look at what the quality of service is across the town. So I think there's quite a few things, and I'll stop my ramble, but I think there are quite a few things that I think they're owed by Spectrum to the town. Specifically, why are there so many outages? How can we get credited? And what's going to be done proactively to address it? And I, I'm not hearing that in what you're, in the conversation tonight.
So, again, your specific issue was not an outage, but was a leakage issue resulting in certain disconnections. Now, the information I was given differs from yours, and I, I'm sorry for that difference, if that was not reported to me accurately, because I told, I was told only one house was disconnected, and it wasn't yours.
It was 14 houses. And then we were, from what I understand, we were supposed to be notified, it was a Sunday. Because we came back, we, we drove up the street, and we saw three trucks in the street. They started taking the line, they, they shut the service off.
So that's by far not the report I was given, again, I apologize, I can only do so much with them when I go back and tell operations and what they tell me. As far as procedures on notification, we put sticker, there's a whole notification sticker that goes on the house, and if that wasn't done properly, I will let operations know.
That didn't happen on any of the 14 homes on Lauren Lane.
Well, it must, some must have happened, because some people did call the line right away.
Because one of my neighbors ran out to the truck. It was, it was, it was raining and snowing. My nine-year-old son was ready to run out to the truck, because he didn't have his Internet. So I said to him, let it go, there's a Sunday, but...
I will let them know that the houses were not properly tagged.
Because when your technician came to the house on Tuesday, he asked me, and we checked again, if there was a sticker or notification, and I actually started texting the neighbors, there was no notification to anybody in the neighborhood, that there was no stickers left on any of the mailboxes, or the doors. They just shut the service off and left. I had it out for three days, for, two and a half days, from Sunday until Tuesday. So, from what I understand, in the contract of this town, if it's five or more homes affected by nodes, you have 24 hours to recover. You didn't.
I have a seven-year-old daughter, she would run out to the street, too.
So, and I know, I don't mean to attack, but I think the point in all this, and I know you're representing the company, is the point is, you have residents paying a lot of money for cable service, and, and I just quickly looked, because the Sturbridge community page is, it's, it's a riot. There's 52 people right there now, recently complaining about how bad the service is. According to, again, to your contract, if I come in here with 21 names, you have 30 days to respond to the proof, on how you're going to prove the quality of the service. That's in your contract. So I, I don't know how, so I'll leave it with this, my point is, is I think you, Spectrum, you, not you necessarily, but you, the company, owe the town a reasonable response as to the number of outages, why there have been so many outages. What are you doing to address the issues that have been breached in the contract? And, and then I think, I'd put it back to the town to say, you know, given that there are potential breaches in the contract, let's renegotiate the contract. Because you have, now have that potential opportunity.
Well, I think we'd have to look into that, but I think...
Oh, agreed, but I think...
But I think we, first of all, need to get the responses straight from the company.
I think, I think to, is it Mr. Menard? I think to feed off of what he said, I think perhaps when you respond to the town administrator, perhaps you could explain why we were out so many hours and why no one knew about it at your company. I mean, I think it's a fair question.
I will try to account for the discrepancy in, yes, the days, what's been going on.
Well, I think that's, if I may, there's two questions. One is the discrepancy in my neighborhood specifically, the second is the holistic town of Sturbridge. How is it that, that your company does not know? You are a technology company. You would know how many outage, how many, because you knew the alert for the, for the node, that there was leakage. Because you know that there's leakage, you, you must know that there's outages going around, that, that you have to react to that. So my request, that I would think is that the residents would like to understand, is how many outages have there been? Because I think, again, you, you have pockets of people who are individually calling. I, I don't know that anybody has the understanding or potentially the time, or they, or they have not come forward, to my knowledge, to put together all the number of complaints. But based on what I'm seeing and reading, there are more than 21 people that can come together here to say that there are outages. So, and that can be documented. So I, I think, at this point, it would be a request to come, my would, could come back with some answers around the breach of some of the service levels in the contract, specifically my specific one, and then the, the holistic contract.
Agreed. I agree.
Yeah, no, we do need responses.
Happy to refer to the sponsors tonight, if we're going to be getting into breach issues, though, that's going to be in our conversation.
Yeah, that's different, but...
But I think that depends on how they handle this, too. I mean, I think if you can handle this, that's going to show good faith and, and see how you can make it better. And if you, for example, if you say, well, we know, okay, now we know why it was out, we, we should have known more, not necessarily in this gentleman's area, because his was, that whole area had, had its specific issues as well. But why, why out for three days, two and a half days? That's like, on any of us, any, any of these parts of town. And I think if you show, you understand what happened, and can guarantee that it's not going to happen again, or that there are measures to prohibit it from happening again or prevent it, I mean, that's one thing, but if you come back and say, well, you know what, nothing we can do about this, I think you might have a problem on your hands, from the community, not from us necessarily, but from the community.
May I add one more thing? Specifically, in the contract, there's, there is a provision for an annual performance test. So, and I think that the town is due that, but I think you have to go through...
We do get a report, we do get a yearly report from the company.
Does it include outages? Do you know? Sorry, if you don't.
I don't think so. Yes, it has, because we were, because there was one time, we were kind of amazed at how few there seemed to be in the report compared to...
Yeah, that's, yeah, where the numbers coming from, that's the question.
Or definition of the...
What do they consider an outage? What do they consider an outage?
Yeah, but we do, we do get a report.
I seem to recall that was the last time that I spoke to Tom Cullen, was about maybe two years or so ago, when, when you received that report, and I believe the selectman asked me to ask about that, and I outreach to Tom Cullen about that issue.
We're currently pulling the report you get together, as it goes out to all the towns and the Commonwealth, so yours should be forthcoming.
Good.
So I think, can I just add something?
Sure.
I think maybe the definition of outage. What do you consider an outage? If someone is out for five days, if someone's out for two days, what do you define outage to be? So that's why, because if the numbers are so low, they defy what we're seeing. This gentleman is correct, when he talks about Sturbridge, Mass, community page, when he says there's like 50 some odd people. What, you know, what do you define? How does, how does your company, and I'm not asking to put you on the spot, but in, in your response to us, how do you define outage? What is your definition of it? And when you give that report, how are you calculating these numbers? Because if your folks don't know an outage has existed, does your company know that? Does it reflect that way? If the, if the people you're calling into don't know, does your, does the regional know? I mean, I think that's a legitimate question. Because when a customer calls and they say, oh, we don't even know there's an outage in your area, there's no record of it, there's no outage on the map for you, so what are you recording? Understand what I'm saying?
Is leakage an outage?
No.
Okay, so, I've got, I've got a leakage in my house, your guy shows up, he disconnects my house from the grid, puts a sticker on my house, and he drives away. I don't have any Internet. I don't have anything with Charter. To me, that's an outage.
It is, that is in the contract. That is, that is a, that is a defined, that with the node leakage, leakage, five or more homes, you have 24 hours, that is in the contract.
But us personally disconnecting, we usually see outages as something usually that is an external event. I could get you a more precise definition.
But I mean, if I'm not hooked up to Charter, you know what I mean, the definition is a mute issue to me. I don't have any Internet, I don't have any cable, I'm out, I get, get nothing. So to me, that, that's an outage. I mean, the technical terminologies you're using really don't mean anything to the consumer. It either works, or it doesn't work.
You're right. So I think you have enough concerns and questions, and we expect to hear back.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Menard.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have town administrator's update.
Madam Chair, in your agenda package, you will find notification to the town of Sturbridge relative to a request for a right of first refusal, a property of land, two parcels, actually, inner about the 227 Podong Road area is, been posted for sale, and there is a viable right of purchase, or offer for purchase. In your agenda package, you have an agreement of sale, excuse me, for the real estate, a property description of the property in question. Just to let you know, and to let the townspeople know, this, I expect no action to be taken on this item here tonight. This is the beginning of a longer 120-day process, under chapter 61, 61A and 61B, the preferential tax program that allows for chapter land to be purchased and sold here in Massachusetts. So these are properties that are receiving a tax benefit for being in chapter land, for environmental or conservation purposes, so on and so forth. The requirement under the law is that we are to be notified whenever a person who is, property is under chapter land, that it's up for sale, if there's a bona fide offer, the town is required to be notified. What I intend to do, and what I will do with this, is make sure that our friends in the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Board of Assessors, Open Space Advisory Committee are all notified that there's a bona fide offer on the table. We will review the document for legal compliance with the law, to make sure that all the requirements are being set, are being met with the notification. On its face, it looks like this meets the requirements, so I am bringing this forward So, I am bringing this forward to you for your information here tonight. The offer, as I recall before you, is $130,000 bona fide offer to purchase the lots. So, if the town, under the law, if the town wishes to purchase this and retain its right of first refusal, we would have the 120 days in order to seek the funds in order to meet the requirement. I will provide you folks a response shortly. I know that we received at least a preliminary response from Conservation. I put that in everyone's box. I might have left it on the seats, I don't recall, from Conservation. But we, this is the beginning of a process, and I just want the town to be notified that this is underway. Again, no action to be taken on this tonight.
Any questions? No. Of course, they're relatively small lots, just over acre.
Yes, I would say so. Lot number two is 1.09 acres, and lot number one, it looks like 1.157 acres.
So, this is a small portion of the overall Chapter 61A parcel that's under.
It looks that way, yes.
Yeah, and they had gone to planning for an A and R, March 14th. So, they're, they're moving quickly.
Well, they will move to the timeframe that the law allows them to.
Right.
Next on your agenda, you have a response to something that has been something the town has been talking about, and I wanted to briefly discuss it at the selectmen's meeting here tonight. Mass. DOT receives complaints from the town of Sturbridge and residents on New Boston Road relative to the intersection of Route 20 and New Boston Road. In your agenda package, you have a response and a formal study done by Mass. DOT relative to the complaints and the need for improvements at that intersection. I'm not going to read the document. I think what I may be doing is posting this on the town's website, sending an announcement online that we have received this. And I know that a couple of residents in particular were very interested in this. So, last week, we did receive notification from Mass. DOT, Barry Lorion, Acting District Three Highway Director, I'm sorry, the District Three Traffic Engineer, Eric, Aaron Kinnahan, to Barry Lorion, the Acting District Three Highway Director. We received a copy of that document, basically explaining their analysis and their findings on the intersections. And I am going to go quickly to the last page of this document, to the conclusion. And I want to just highlight the findings of Mass. DOT. As you know, Route 20 is a state highway, and they are responsible for the intersection at that, at that road. They have found that, based on the crash reports, in the four-year study from January 2013 to December of 2016, that they found that it is not a significant crash history at that intersection. They feel that making no changes to the traffic control or configuration at the intersection is viable at this time, particularly Alternative One. And Alternative One is listed on page 10 of the in-document, which is no improvements are being recommended. They did review Alternative Two, which proposes the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Route 20 and New Boston Road. They feel that that would increase the number of crashes at the intersection and further deteriorate traffic operations along Route 20 corridor. And they are willing to continue to study Alternatives Three and Four. They think that it would reduce the crashes at the vehicles exiting out of New Boston Road. I just want to highlight on page 11 of the document is, Alternative Three is restricting all left-hand turns. It would eliminate the cross-moving conflicts at the intersection, potentially correcting up to five of the accidents that were recorded at this intersection over that study period. Alternative Four is restricting left-hand turns from New Boston Road, but continue to allow the movement of vehicles entering New Boston Road. These intersections, these restrictions would possibly correct up to four of the cross-movement crashes that occurred at that intersection. They are continuing to evaluate the crash history at that intersection, and they intend to work with the town of Sturbridge to determine the necessary improvements at Route 20 and New Boston Road. No action is required by the Board of Selectmen at this time. I didn't want to share this with the members of the board. I shared it with the DPW, I shared it with the Planning Board and the Planning Department. And I will post this, as I said, on the town's website for the people of the town and forward it to those people who have forwarded complaints to us in the past.
Okay, now, Leon, when they say they will continue to work with the town, do they expect us to just sit here and do nothing and then carry the ball sometime eventually?
It is their intersection, so I'm expecting.
Or do we keep on pushing them?
We can, if, if the Board of Selectmen has a recommendation that they would like to see happen, I think that I can take that to, to our friends at Mass. Highway.
Madam Chair, what about the Roundabout? That's part of the, the whole, if they're looking at an alternative, if we're going to do some kind of a makeshift alternative, why not have them look at the Roundabout as part, that's part of the plan that Gina put for that whole gateway redevelopment?
Yeah, that was a company that had done that and come up with that.
Right, but maybe we can, I mean, we've got nothing to lose. They're not going to give us anything as it is, so what, I mean, what do you got to lose?
I, I personally think they might be willing to help us with Alternative Four. That's the left turn from New Boston.
Right, so they'll have to, but you'll have to take a Uwe at the light.
Yeah, and there'd have to be a little change.
You'd have to change those lights, too.
Yeah.
You know, because the timeframe on that, because you have them going left at the light to, to 131 as well.
Yeah, because the other one, I don't think people would be too thrilled about restrict all left-hand turns.
Yeah.
Poor people would have to go up to Hobbs Brook and turn around and come down.
Yeah, that's crazy. Yeah, that's, that doesn't make sense.
Mile and a half.
The other thing I noticed is that on their survey, they reported no injury accidents at that intersection. And we have absolutely had a ton of them at that intersection. We had a double fatal there a few years ago. Two brothers got killed coming out of the hotel.
Yeah, I questioned the crash data, just looking at it.
Oh, there's been a ton of personal injury accidents.
I don't know if they've got accurate crash data, I don't know where this came from, but.
Well, do you, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you know when the double fatalities were? Was it between the dates of January 2013 and December of 2016?
Back before that.
That's why it's not there, yeah. Before the study.
I don't know why they picked four years. Why wouldn't they pick seven or eight or 10? In other words, the crash data is there, and it's certainly not what this report is reflecting.
The other thing that this does not consider is increased traffic due to a new hotel, a new Panera Bread, and possibly a bank at that intersection. That, you know, that's a significant increase in, in traffic.
Are you going to turn around a tractor-trailer at the 131 lights? Because there's a lot of tractor-trails that stay there every night.
They, they, they say there would have to be changes made.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of changes.
In the cover letter, they're talking about not allowing a left-hand turn coming out of New Boston Road, but allowing people to turn left going in. That would mean, currently, you'd have to make a left-hand turn at the intersection 131 and go through the state yard and turn around, which is tight for a tractor-trailer, and then come back out 131 and then head eastbound on, on 20, or go over to 84 or whatever. But, yeah, that, that would make it very inconvenient for residents in the New Boston Road area to, to, you know, head eastbound.
Well, but if we have traffic and safety concerns, inconvenience, kind of takes a second draw to that.
Yeah.
I mean, everyone's inconvenienced.
Yeah.
We should be more inconvenienced with the double yellow line going down 20 now, because that means you can't take a left turn. So, all the people that want to go to the bank and everything, will still do, but they really shouldn't be. And if they have an accident, it'll be their fault. I drive all the way up to Hobbs Brook, turn around and come down, and then go to the bank, but.
It's a chance.
Yeah, one, one thing, one thing that the town is doing to be proactive is we're working with CMRPC this year, doing a corridor profile of Route 20 from this point west. So, you know, the, the study report will be about that thick, and it will, will consider this intersection.
Mary, we'll all be in the home by that time, that one's done.
Yeah, that's.
They might be in the home, but.
That's why I said, we'll all be there.
But we have to, we'll have to.
The corridor profile will review the crash data, and if, you know, if it, a three, four-year crash data is, is kind of shot for intersection analysis.
Well, it's shot, but I think they were counting on the fact that it's busier now than, you know, seven years ago and eight years ago. So, they're going with the busy times.
But because crash data is so, you know, usually they do 10-year. So, we'll see, we'll see when the roadway profile is done, what, you know, how the crash.
Unless they didn't have crash data from 2012.
Oh, they should.
No, but that's, that could be the answer.
I would ask for the board's concurrence on the appointment of Christopher Chidowski as an associate member of the Trails Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. I would ask for the board's acceptance of the resignation of Barbara Search from the Elderly and Disabled Tax Assistance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
In your agenda package, you have a letter of resignation from Taylor Plumlee, who is resigning as a full-time dispatcher in the town of Sturbridge, but she is willing to stay on as a part-time dispatcher as recommended by the Chief of Police.
Do you want two motions on that?
I will take whatever the board is willing to give me.
Well, a motion to accept the resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, a motion to appoint her as part-time dispatcher.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. I, in your agenda package, you have a letter of commendation from the Chairman of the Council on Aging here in Sturbridge, in recognition of Leslie Wong, Outreach Coordinator, Carmen McGilvray, Administrative Assistant, and Rachel Jalbert, Program Coordinator at the Council on Aging. And it will read as follows, "The Sturbridge Council on Aging Board Members Would Like to Publicly Recognize Leslie, Carmen, and Rachel for Going Above and Beyond in the Three-Month Absence of a Senior Center Director by Continuing to Provide Quality Day-to-Day Activities, Programs, and Services. Daily Interactions with the Seniors Were Met with Professionalism in Always with a Pleasant and Patient Demeanor. No Matter How Challenging Their Days Were, They Always Maintained Their Composure and Displayed Compassion in All Situations. Their Ability to Proficiently Multitask Well Above, Beyond Their Job Descriptions Are Significant Attributes They Possess. This Dedication Enriched the Lives of the Seniors at the Center by Providing a Comfortable Social Atmosphere for Meeting New Friends, So All the Seniors May Continue to Leave Active, Productive, and Happy Lives. On Behalf of the Entire Council on Aging, Sturbridge Board, Members Ken White, Ann White, Barb, Jean O'Fredo, Tina Peterson, and Gladys Antilli, We Want Leslie, Carmen, and Rachel to Know. We truly appreciate all of your efforts and willingness to go, and willingness in operating the Senior Center at the Highest Level, Providing Opportunities for the Seniors to Maintain and Enhance Their Quality of Life. We also know, Based on your Worth, Ethic, Passion, and Spirit, You Will Continue to Fully Commit, Meeting the Needs of the Growing, the Growing Needs of the Seniors in the Years Ahead. Signed, Sue Grandone, Chair, Sturbridge Council on Aging Board Chair." Madam Chair, I have no other business under Town Administrator's Update.
Okay, old business, Priscilla.
I wanted to revisit the, the item of putting department head salaries as a line item on the budget again. I, a few residents have approached and said that they don't think it's as open as it should be. Even though it's listed in the back of the book, the department head salaries, there's not a year-to-year comparison. So, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I've expressed the same thoughts, particularly this year, when I looked at the percentage increases, and the percentage increases last year. When we had done the line item, department heads' salaries were right there, and the percentage right next to it. Nowhere now do we have that, and quite a few of those percentages are eye-opening, to say the least.
So, I will tell you, we can revisit that. I do have a report for you on that item that you raised with me on Saturday. I, I'm sorry, I didn't get it done last week.
Well, I was, no, I knew you weren't, you weren't too well.
Yeah, but I do have it, I did it over the weekend, and it is in your mailboxes for your, for you today.
Is there a breakdown of, of the steps for department heads?
Yes.
That's what I had asked for.
That's what he's talking about? Oh, okay, great, okay.
And I, and just, I remembered sending it to you, and I did check my records, and I did send that to you last March, when it was asked about it last year. I sent it as an email. I know you get a million emails from me, and I apologize for that.
I would have read something like that.
I would have read it and probably just didn't keep it, you know?
It's fine, I have, I put a copy of it in your mail slot from last year.
Because it's nice to see, because.
And it's the current, it has the current steps, it has the current.
I gave you last year's, and I do, I think we have this year's as well.
Okay, great.
Because it is, it is quite a change from what we've done and what people used to, transparency.
I gave you a, I gave you a very lengthy response to this, so I apologize in advance.
That's okay, because I know when we, in, what was it, 2017, because we felt that the department heads weren't keeping up that much, we gave everyone a 3% raise that year. And they felt, you know, there was inequity compared to the contracts with unions. Well, now, all of a sudden, we have percentages that leave the union contracts.
I, I think when you read my report, you're going to feel differently about this.
Well, I hope so, because, but it's still, and.
I'll tell you what, read, read my report, and happy to have a further conversation with you folks about it.
But I do, I have people last year and this year say, you know, we like to see the department head there.
Sure.
Okay. Any other old?
That's it.
Craig, old?
I'm okay with old business.
I'm just old, and I have no business. New business.
Could I get that ring, please?
She's on a roll tonight.
I know.
It's just a question for future time. I was visiting with some friends over the weekend, and there's some communities that are small like ours, and they have their health insurance, and it's, I guess, my understanding is the same company we have, but they also have dental. Does, do our people have dental as part of their health? They do.
It's a separate plan.
It's a separate plan, okay.
It's, it's optional, meaning that any employee can buy it or not buy it. But that's the way it is in most places.
Okay, because they were talking about, and it sounded, some of them pay a lot less, they said, than some of the people they know that live in Sturbridge. I was just curious.
Yeah, so I can answer this question now.
That's fine.
Our employees, there, we have a voluntary dental plan, and it's essentially, we buy it in bulk to save the townspeople money. But we don't actually and haven't contributed to dental as part of their employment with the town. Not all municipalities pay for dental, that's usually something that we offer as a voluntary dental. They might have, under our insurance, there might be emergency dental that is covered, but like routine things, I don't believe is covered under our insurance.
Usually optional, yeah.
It's completely optional.
Okay, thanks.
And that's more common than, than having municipalities covering a portion of dental.
Thanks.
Okay, Craig, new business?
No, the only thing I'd like to say is, we have an election coming up next Monday, and that this may be my last meeting tonight, if we don't win the reelection or whatever. And I want to thank everyone on the board, including the town administrator, for all the, the work that we've been able to do together, and I've really enjoyed my time here.
Well, thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Well, I could, I should say the same thing as Craig just did. You know, this could be my last meeting, and, you know, I really enjoyed serving with all of you, and I, I hope to be back here soon, but we'll, we'll see next Monday. Just, under new business, I'd like people to get out and vote, however they please.
That's right, I was, I was going to bring that up again, because the Board of Selectmen is the only race, the only position where there is a race. Some positions are, they only have one person running. I do know there is a candidate who has expressed desire for write-in on the ZBAs.
That's because we have a vacancy and no one's running on the ballot.
Yeah, well, there's two vacancies, and only one, yeah, yeah. So, please, Old Sturbridge Village, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday, April 9th.
We'll have the lowest turnout ever.
April 9th, Monday.
The 9th.
Madam Chair, under new business, I just have one item, and it will be relatively brief. In your agenda packages, I Um, in your agenda packages, I gave to you the goal planning document. You, as you folks know, a couple of meetings ago, you folks set the goals for the, uh, for the Board of Selectmen's goal, and, I'm sorry, for the Town Administrator's goal for 2018. Um, every year, I give to you a goal planning document, um, for your benefit and the benefit of the people at home. I'm just going to go through this briefly, and then I'll answer any questions that you folks may have. Uh, goal number one is bringing forward the rezoning of Route 15 to promote development. Um, uh, I'm expecting that shortly, we will be having the final report issued by CMRPC. I will present that to the Board of Selectmen as soon as we get that. Uh, we will review the findings, uh, and provide me with further direction sometime this spring, sometime this summer, and then we will go forward from there. I, it depends on what the study says, just wanted to bring you up to date on that. Establishing a strategy on recreational marijuana was goal number two. Um, we did talk about, um, some strategies that you folks have asked me to do. In fact, some of these things, you have already given me direction, you folks have already given me a request to bring forward an article for a ban at the annual town meeting. I'm working with council, I've given you folks, and you vote, folks have voted, to include that article on the town meeting warrant, um, but I will be bringing more information to you on that. Moving to question, uh, number three, uh, the McGilpin Road Waterland Grant, we've been working very diligently on that. We have contracted with the engineer for the waterline study. The final analysis is not yet done, uh, but we will be, uh, hope to be getting that, we will be getting that before June 1st, and then I will present that to you with recommendations moving forward. Uh, number four is continuing to work on the public building studies. Um, step number one is finalizing the space needs analysis for the public safety complex. I did outreach the architect who was working on that, she promised to get that to me shortly. I will present those options to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation on a, um, Sturbridge Building Committee to evaluate and recommend a course of action sometime in the spring, hopefully, and then we'll move forward from there. Uh, goal number five, working on the underground utility study for Route 20. Uh, uh, I am working with the town planner on a utility, uh, with the utility companies on requesting a planning meeting, we're working on that, and then that's going to depend on how that, uh, meeting goes. Goal number six was establishing an affordable housing committee and preparing a study on housing data. Uh, I am still seeking, and this is an, uh, announcement to the town of Sturbridge, I am still seeking members to serve on the Affordable Housing Partnership. Uh, right now, I only have two people that have formally stepped forward, one person who has provided to me a letter of intent but hasn't yet gotten back to me. Once I have a majority on that committee, I hope to be able to get them working with me and, uh, with Gene shortly. Uh, goal number seven is looking at the hours of the town offices to provide restructuring, to provide night hours for residents. Um, I am going to be working on that in the next couple of, uh, couple of months. Uh, goal number eight is supporting the Recreation Committee on the Recreational Field Project. I have, um, I, I am looking to meet with their new steering committee and the Recreation Committee to talk about that. I will give you more information as we move forward on that project. I do believe that this committee is going to need an awful lot of support, uh, in guidance, if I can say that. Uh, goal number nine was pursuing age and dementia-friendly designation for the town of Sturbridge. Um, I am going to be working with our new, uh, Council on Aging Director, Senior Center Director on that, and I did meet with her on this already. I know I went through this relatively quickly, but I just wanted to give you folks a, share this with you, and to give you a, an initial guidance on how I intend to start working on these goals moving forward in April 1st of 2019, 18.
18.
May I, uh, may I ask if there's any questions from the board? I know I went through this relatively quickly.
Any questions?
Does this meet the expectations of the board? You don't have to vote on it, I just want to see some head nodding?
Yes, rattling.
Madam Chair, I have no other new business before the board?
Okay, next we have correspondence, Priscilla.
Let me read it, okay. Do you, do I have to read all the descriptor or just the letter? Just the letter, okay. March 14, Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. March 16, Charter of Communications. March 16, Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskdale. March 19, KP Law Memorandum, Conversion to Recreational Marijuana Establishment.
Now, that's a subject.
That is a subject. March 20, Cannabis Control Commission Municipal Guide. March 22, ABBCC Advisory, Cannabis in Alcoholic Beverages. March 23, Notice of Mass DEP Filing, Release of Diesel Fuel and Hydraulic Oil. March 25, 10th Annual Brimfield Trail Association Five-Mile Race and Walk. March 25, 30th Annual Trek the Trails Earth Day. March 26, Expanded Massachusetts Employee Safety Law. And March 27, Pregnant Workers Fairness Act.
Can I just go back to one? Um, I think we nodded that you didn't have to read them all, but I do want to go back...
I can go back, I can read them.
No, no, I want to go back to one. If you can look at the March 19th, the KP Law Memorandum, this, uh, this one in particular was, uh, really requested by the, by the Board of Selectmen. I just want to make sure that you folks have had a chance to look at that. That one is specific to you folks.
Right, and can, I, I'd like to revisit that when it's a full board.
Yes.
I really would like to revisit that, because I have read it and stuff, but I have, I still have questions that are unanswered.
If you have questions that you...
Well, it's the basic, the same ones that Mary Dowling has brought up, it's the same question. I feel we got railroaded. I think, I mean, I feel we got railroaded from day one, because the law wasn't, the law wasn't finalized.
Right.
They kept getting changed and changed and changed, and no one guided us properly on how to handle the recreational component of HEAL. That, and I, and I know Selectmen Dowling, I'm, I'm not speaking for her, but I know she's raised that issue as well. So, I, that's why I'd like to wait till she's here to come back to that.
Would you like to have the, uh, through you, Madam Chair, we could have this as an item under new business?
Yes.
The other thing in that, in that particular correspondence, too, is on, uh, March 22nd, Cannabis in Alcoholic Beverages, it says a memo outlining law to manufacturers sell alcoholic beverages containing cannabinoid extracts. I mean, is this something that we can take a look at, and if it doesn't suit our edge, can we take a vote on this to either approve or disapprove?
Actually, uh, you don't have to take any action on this, this is a clarification of a law, and essentially, if you look at the underlined section, and I, I guess I could read this out loud, what the ABBCC is basically saying in this advisory is that it is unlawful to manufacture and/or sell alcoholic beverages containing any cannabinoid extracts, including THC, uh, CBD, regardless of whether it's derived from a cannabis plant or industrial hemp. That was the law before. With the legalization of recreational marijuana, the ABBCC is continuing the practice that these things are illegal, not necessarily of, of need for action by the Board of Selectmen, but it is, it just, I, I want you folks to be aware of.
No action necessary.
So, if somebody came to you and says, "We'd like to be able to sell this," we would be able to pull this up and say, "No, you can't."
Yeah, okay, I get that.
Okay.
Very well.
But that's a good question.
Any other questions on the correspondence? Okay, we have minutes. I did put hold because I thought Priscilla wasn't going to be here. Okay, and we only have two. Okay, March 19th, 2018. Any questions, comments? Colleen, I just have a comment on page four, where it says, you know, about a quarter of the way down, note Select, Selectmen Dowling arrived. We usually put in the time. Now, we're going back through tapes. Yeah, she had to leave.
Maybe they were able to answer that this time, but maybe moving forward.
Yeah, well...
Unless you know.
Yeah, roundabout.
I think it was that day. I think you're right, because I think she said it in the beginning of the meeting.
She was leaving at 8:00.
I think you're right, you're actually right, you're right.
We can amend this.
Yep, Mary left at 8:00 o'clock.
Okay, so moving forward from...
Yeah, it just makes it, okay.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
One abstention.
All opposed, and one abstention. And, Colleen, on that, I noticed there was one other time when it was, um, an abstention, and you had put 4-1, it should be really 4-0-1. Well, on votes, if there's an abstention, in that case, it would be 4-4, and, yeah, the abstention.
In the minutes, it says that I'm abstaining.
Yeah, but she did put the, um, abstention on the vote.
So, this one would be 3-0-1.
Yeah.
And we usually do put the name of whoever abstains or votes in, however the votes go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, is there a second?
I already seconded it.
Did you? Today?
Yes, after, just two minutes ago.
Just after I made the motion, I think.
All in favor?
I thought we voted already, too.
You did.
Well, then, what are we talking about?
Why are we...
We're in the question.
Yeah, but we're in the discussion stage.
Have you been sampling the cannabis again?
Been drinking cannabinoid, cannabinoids.
It's that IV?
I've been trying to keep it away from it.
Okay.
Drink the much beer.
My goodness, okay, March 5th, 2018.
I have one correction.
Priscilla?
Um, Colleen, on page one, um, right after the motion to go into executive session, the chair stated that the board will return to, will reconvene in open session. I know you say that we did, but we usually put it in there.
Put it in there.
Yeah.
As part of the motion.
As part of the motion. Do you follow me, Colleen? As part of the motion, right. You do state that we reconvene, but it said as part of the motion that we will, we will reconvene, okay? Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? No one opposed, and I abstain.
I think we're closed.
We don't know.
Good message.
No, 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 don't, don't get it, unless you want to be the Town Administrator for a minute.
Yeah, you could have fun with that.
You could have very, you have a lot of fun with it.
Okay, then we have January 17th, 2017. Okay, just a verb off on page three, Colleen, the first paragraph, fourth line down, it begins, fourth word in, altruist brewery, should be has-not. Okay, anyone else? Motion to approve with that slight correction?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, with the edit.
Okay, is there a second?
There is.
Okay, all in favor? Three in favor, no against, and one abstention.
0-1, no, 3-0-1.
Okay, February 21st, 2017. Goman pizza?
Pick up a delivery.
Cannabis control.
Colleen, on page two, um, that note, when Selectmen Jimis arrived, just, I don't know the time, but...
If...
It's going back ways.
If you got the time of the start of the meeting, pass, pass forward to that.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a timer on the, uh, on the tape.
And on page four, the last paragraph, could be, spell checked it for you, the second line, Old Sturbridge Village and Public House, Public House has a K at the end of it.
Public, spell P-U-B-L-I.
Page four, um, last paragraph, second line. Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to approve as amended? So moved.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, then we have November 20th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
You don't have enough people, do you?
Oh, no, we don't. That's why I wrote hold on it.
Yeah.
No, we don't, we've only got two people.
Over to the next meeting.
Over, yeah.
Okay, so that's it on the...
Holding.
Okay, also, we still have to do that policy when we have a full board.
Well, we haven't had a full board yet.
I know, in a while.
About a while.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Nope.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Craig and I were having too much fun.
That's right.
I'm still sending you them. Oh, you didn't probably tell me otherwise.